Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, I just want to do a quick audio check. Are we coming in okay?
Yes, Mayor.
Roll call, item two.
Nelson.
Here.
Orson.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
George on?
Thank you.
To the public who's tuning in, just want to let you know we're still struggling through with some audio issues, so please bear with us. We're trying to stream a couple different pieces of technology together with Facebook Live, TV, and our system inside, as well as a Zoom meeting, so we appreciate your patience with that. Item three is a presentation of initial position statement from the Spencer Employees Association Incorporated.
Um, Don, I believe here I should, I just share what was presented to us, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. We received the initial bargaining position from the bargaining unit on Friday afternoon. They have asked for a 6% increase in wages for the 2021-22 contract year. They have asked for a one-year contract, and they're asking for a change to the overtime hours. Instead of overtime starting after 40 hours a week, they propose to have overtime starting if more than eight hours are put in during a day. And we will discuss their proposal in our strategy session at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Amanda? Does not look like it. I will move on to the consent agenda. Item four, four A is a motion to approve the City Council minutes of November 16, 2020. B are the licenses approve a renewal of Class B beer permit with Sunday sales for Pizza Hut and Class B beer permit with Sunday sales for Tienda y Carne Sierra, don't believe I said that correctly, La Morenita, apologize, both subject to final approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending November 30, 2020. D is a motion to approve sidewalk construction and assessment agreements with Jacobson Homes Corporation, 302 East 11th Street. E is a motion to approve cigarette tobacco permit applications for Brew Oil Company LLC at 4318 Highway Boulevard, 15 Grand Avenue, and 1001 South Grand Avenue effective January 15th, 2021. F is a motion to set a hearing date for January 4, 2021 at 6:30 PM for budget amendment for the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. And the final item G is a resolution acknowledging receipt of calendar year 2020 budget amendment and calendar year 2021 calendar year budget for Spencer Municipal Utilities.
So moved.
Who was that?
Tom.
First by Tom, second by Lauren. Need discussion? Questions? Hearing none. I guess we'll do a roll call vote. Teresa, you want to call the vote? I'll call the vote. You want to go through the council members?
Nelson?
Yes.
Orson?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Wunschel?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Reed?
Hi.
Thank you.
Item five, old business, there is none. Item six, new business, six A, is a motion to approve professional services agreement with Stockwell Engineers Incorporated for professional services in the amount of $16,000 for development of concept designs and cost estimates for park and recreation projects. After a first and a second, I will kick this over to Jared for explanation and to field your questions.
I'll make your motion.
First by Bill.
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. Jared, you want to explain this?
Yeah, so David Locke from Stockwell Engineers is on here as well, but we've kind of been discussing our kind of strategic plan for kind of our wow project. And so some of these projects are, that came out of our master park plan, as well as the splash pad, some improvements to the aquatic center, and the potential relocation of our campground. So to give us a better idea of cost estimates and construction costs and help us kind of determine a location for some of those things, we've kind of talked with Stockwell and having them provide some concept design plans and initial cost estimates for construction for those, those three items. So this is what that agreement would do. They would develop those concept designs and cost estimates for those projects.
David, question, what, what would the limitations be on that 16,000 once the design is done?
From a design standpoint, we would look at the concept, cost estimates, and overall, we would develop some perspective views that would help with marketing standpoint, you know, if this goes to some, you know, some sort of public vote. And we would be, you know, willing to assist you guys as you continue to move through this process. You know, this would get us a step in the right direction in terms of fully understanding the overall costs of these projects, but you know, we don't look at it as, you know, our scope ends and then we're done. We want to help you guys through this, to bring it across the finish line. And so, you know, whatever, you know, as, as we go through this process, if you guys have other questions or, you know, additional items that you would like us to look at, you know, we're certainly willing to explore and look at those.
So there's no even time frame that this gets to the point where it's over with?
From, from a timeline standpoint, we are going to talk to Water Technology. They're, they did your guys' original aquatic facility, and they did your assessment of that facility approximately five, six years ago. And so we've worked with them on other projects, and we're going to discuss with them some of these improvements, talk with them in regards to the splash pad and such. And we're hoping that that can happen here before Christmas to get that kicked off and discuss that with them. From there, we'll be developing concepts and cost estimates for the splash pad aquatic center and the campground. We'll then meet with you guys to review those concepts and cost estimates, hoping that that'll happen if we can get with Water Technology here before Christmas. I'm planning on that happening to meet with you guys probably the middle of January to review these concepts and cost estimates based on the feedback that we would get from, from you guys, depending on how much feedback there is, how much change you guys want. I'm hopeful that this could come before the Parks Committee and City Council then in February.
Okay, thank you.
David, these would just be budgetary type estimates and projections as far as the actual designs?
That's correct. Yep. But we, you know, as a part of what will be coming up with these concepts is we'll be laying this all out in AutoCAD because we want our cost estimates to be, you know, accurate. So we'll be doing quantity takeoffs and that sort of thing when it comes to looking at, you know, whether it's utilities or concrete surfacing, number of camping pads, that sort of thing. We're going to lay that all out in CAD, so that way we can get good numbers for you guys. And then, once we have a number established, that'll be based on, you know, the current construction market. And if you guys are looking at it being a 2022 project or 2023, then we can put, you know, escalators on there from that standpoint, what the pricing would be, you know, for multiple years out.
That covers all three projects that you just stated, that cost?
Yep. Yep. We would have individual cost estimates for each one, and then, yeah, we could pull them all up, either way.
Thank you.
Yep. There any other questions or discussion related to the item? Alright, I'll call the vote. Teresa?
Nelson?
Hi.
Orson?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Wunschel?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Reed?
Hi.
Thank you.
Alright, and just a reminder, for feedback purposes, if you're not engaged in speaking, please mute your phone or your computer station that you're at. We are using an iPhone here to pick the audio up. We just want to try to limit all the feedback that we can. Item six B is a resolution accepting work on the 2020 West Fourth Street Underground Project.
Can you make a motion on that, Ron?
First by Ron.
Second.
Second by Bill. Questions or discussion?
Ross, can you give us an update on that and what completely is done and where, where we're at?
Yeah, so the, so the project is complete. You can see in the notes there that as far as working days, the contractor got the project done, street was open within the amount of working days specified in the contract. They did start the project later than anticipated with the good weather. It didn't really affect anything, so we haven't recommended any, any changes in the contract as far as damages. The, the work itself is done, is complete. So at the next meeting, I believe you'll see an assessment schedule for the storm sewer, and that should wrap the project up.
Thank you, Ross.
Any other questions or discussion? We'll call the vote.
Nelson?
Hi.
Orson?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Wunschel?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Reed?
Hi.
Thank you. Item six C is a resolution accepting work on the 2020 intake replacement project.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Bill. Questions or discussion on this? Hearing done, we'll call the vote.
Nelson?
Hi.
Orson?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Wunschel?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Reed?
Hi.
Thank you. Item six D is a motion to approve purchase of Tyler Content Software and Related Services for $17,839 from the technology budget.
So moved.
First by Tom.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Discussion or questions related to this? Brian, you want to touch on this a little bit? Thank you.
Pass the mic. So it's kind of outlined in the ears is this was an anticipated next step of our expansion. It allows us to store documents directly related with anything that we process through the financials, community development, which will be all the building permits and light business licensing. So if there's backup to any of those licenses or permits, we can store them and attach them directly into the system and directly so we can pull up that permit in five years and see, oh, here's their application or here's their blueprints. And then it works throughout our entire suite of Tyler content, or Tyler software, and being able to attach documents. We do similar things with Laserfish right now. It's just we don't have that integration between Laserfish and Tyler software to be able to tie them directly to those individual items, accounts payable for receipts, et cetera like that. So just moving the next step forward.
Brian, you've worked with these folks before, it sounds like?
Yep, they're our financial software.
And then is there like, what kind of a timeframe they're looking at? Are you already on stream with it?
Can you repeat that, Lauren?
Kind of a timeframe where you're looking at to be on stream with it?
Timeframe?
Yeah.
Um, I won't know that till we get our quote back to them. I would assume it'd probably be three to four months out before we get on their implementation schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing done, we'll call the vote.
Nelson?
Hi.
Orson?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Wunschel?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Reed?
Hi.
Thank you. Item six E is a resolution approving the purchase of the city of Spencer, Iowa, approximately 99 acres in the northwest quarter of Section 14 Township 96 North, Range 36 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Clay County, Iowa.
So moved.
First by Lauren.
Second.
Second by Donovan. And I do believe I got a message from Amanda. George has joined now, I believe. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, he's connecting to audio.
Alright. We'll make sure he gets in. Any discussion related to this item?
For the citizens, can someone explain exactly where this property is?
This property is located directly south of the Clay County Sheriff's Office. It is east of the new housing development out there by the old Eaton facility.
Thank you, Amanda.
Any other discussion? Alright, hearing done, we'll call the vote.
Nelson?
Hi.
Orson?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Wunschel?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Reed?
Hi.
Moriarty.
George on? Alright. I don't believe his audio is connected. Alright, passes. Thank you. Item seven, department head reports. We'll start with Planning Department. Amanda?
Thanks, Mayor. The board of adjustment met this morning and took action on several items. They approved a special request for a communications tower at the fairgrounds for the radio station. They approved a bank stabilization project subject to approval by the Corps of Engineers. They tabled a special, special exception use request from Lee Ude and the House of God. They're holding a special meeting on Thursday to tour the property. And they set a hearing date for January 25th, 2021 at 8:15 AM to take up the matter of the building permit that the city issued to Isonova. An administrative appeal was filed by MWI, and they'll be meeting on that matter on January 25th. Planning and zoning met last week and discussed residential building materials. You'll see on the agenda at your next meeting a recommendation or a recommended ordinance change, excuse me, to follow the international residential code as it relates to building materials for residential properties. Those are more performance-based rather than aesthetic-based, and Anna's done a good, a very nice job of pulling that information together. We did pass it along to the long-term planning committee, and Lauren thought it was fine to move it on to the council at the next meeting. Lastly, Anna has also been pretty busy with floodplain matters. We did receive notification from the DNR that they have pushed back the implementation date to midsummer of 2021 rather than spring. They also have started the study of the Green Industrial Center, and we expect that study to be completed by the late, late spring, early summer prior to implementation of the floodplain map. So that's what's going on in the planning department, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you have.
Amanda, a question I have on the green development, green industrial development area. Is there anything we have to do, the city needs to do, or is that simply all in the hands of, of DNR?
Currently, it's in the hands of DNR. We've provided them with the information they've asked for. They are studying the, well, it's a creek that runs through there that leads to a larger drainage ditch that is what has put it into the, into the floodplain. So they'll be providing some strategies for mitigation. They may show that it can be removed from the floodplain, but right now it's, it's in their hands.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other questions on planning? Hearing done, we'll move on to library. I'm not sure if Mandy's on the call. Are you there, Mandy?
She's not, Mayor.
Okay. Fire Department, I see Mark Stover is on.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of November, we had a fairly busy month with 70s phone calls. In the fire area, we had five false alarms and three investigations of city burning leaves. We've pumped a knife out recently.
Can you hear me, Mayor? Can't hear it.
Can you hear me now?
Better, Mark, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, this computer's not bad. I just did a new one. Oh, in November, we had 73 calls total, 12 in the fire area and EMS, 61 total calls. That's quite a bit for us because of COVID. That's 100% increase for the month of November for us EMS calls. And we were able to get in one training at the beginning of November before everything heated up. And we've had a few EMS trainings online with Beth Messerall from the hospital. So that would be us for November. Any questions?
Alright, thank you, Mark. Police Department, Chief Warburton?
Good evening. The police department responded to 1,365 calls for service the month of November, and we performed 32 arrests. With the time change, police department took advantage of that the month of November and did all of our low-light firearms qualifications, did that department-wide. We've also been working on getting our new patrol cars. And if you guys do remember, because of the pandemic, our cars were a little late getting in, so we're just getting our cars from last year. And I'm glad to announce that on Thursday, we'll get the last one there. And then Don Pearson has stepped up their order here for the department, and we actually have one of the new patrol cars for this year going back down with Carl Chevrolet. So that'll be getting accomplished. Essentially, we're going to be getting four new squad cars here in a row, basically to update the fleet. On November 19th, the Civil Service Board met, and we approved our current hiring list of three people. Usually, there's a top 10 list, so with that number being as low as it is, I anticipate that the need for a new hiring list will come fairly soon in 2021, and I imagine we would support that decision. It wouldn't take very long to exhaust that, that list, that current list. But that's all I have for this month. If there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Public Works, Mark?
Good evening, everybody. With the nice weather, we've continued several projects within the Public Works Department. We continue working with our sewer cleaning program. So every year, we pick a quadrant, a part of the town to try to clean all the lines. Currently working in the northeast part of town. We continued sweeping and noticed that on some of the seal coat streets, there was some dislodged rock and aggregate, so they continue sweeping that. That, they were working on that last week. We started trimming willows in the river bottom. That's, you kind of take advantage when you get an opportunity to work there. Sometimes, if you don't have snow and it's frozen, you can get down and, and maintain that floodway. Currently, it's dry enough, so we'll have, some of them are cut by hand and then treated with a tordon. Others were able to use a rough-cut mower to maintain those, but you don't always get the window to do that, so taking advantage of that. Also pouring concrete tomorrow on the trail down by the boat ramp. There's a section of trail. We've been able to keep that subgrade frost free and have the insulated blankets ready to go there. We also did cold weather concrete patch on taxiway C and also a patch on 1230 at the airport. A lot of work has been done, thanks to the long fall at the tree and leaf site. A lot of compost has been moved in maintaining that. It is, it is amazing to see the amount of volume that does come in that facility. Also, we're able to do some gravel road maintenance before it freezes up, add gravel here and there, try to blade them in, blade it in so it isn't loose. Also, we try to get the, we call them lip edges, but the edge of the road in our rural design road where the shoulder kind of gets pushed away or displaced, we've been able to work on East 18th Street, 10th Avenue, also East 30th. So that's nice to have that done prior to the winter. Christmas lights, that's something that we do. Thank you, SMU and Iowa Lakes Cooperative as well. It's nice to see all the bucket trucks run at one time and make quick work of that. We're also still sweeping leaves. We're going to demo a piece of, of equipment this week, which is a leaf machine that gathers them instead of going through a street sweeper. So you'll also see that on the capital improvement plan when we talk about that. Also, would like to remind everybody that we do have transfer, transfer station hours changed. Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, Saturday, 8 to 1. Wednesday, we got one little final project on the West Fourth Street Storm Sewer Job, and believe it or not, in the first part of December, we'll be doing some street painting. Want to try to accomplish that before the winter and assist with the parking delineation there. So I think that covers it, unless you folks have any questions.
Alright, thank you, Mark. Park and Recreation, Jared?
Good evening. Yeah, so we've been just working through our capital improvement projects for the upcoming years, as well as working through next year's budget as well. Some of the cost estimates, we're working with both internally and working with other consultants on other parts of the parks, projects, wow projects. And so we'll hopefully have cost estimates for those soon. We're also working on tree trimming. We're going to start doing some of those along the trails within the park system, just to kind of clean those up, get those up off the trails, do some of that work down along West Leach, kind of open that trail up a little bit as well, too. So also been working with Bob Rose and Mike Harlem on trail donations, and to date, we've gotten over $12,000 in donations. So that's been, been really good, as long as, well as, we've had some more pledges before
before the end of the year, too, so we hopefully see that number jump up again, too. The last thing, on Thursday, the Iowa DNR is meeting to approve grant applications for the Water Recreation Access Grant that we submitted. So on Thursday, we'll know if we received funding for our West Leach Boat Ramp Project. So I'm looking forward to that on Thursday, so.
Jared, I see Bob Rose is on the call.
Yeah.
Bob, would you like to talk about what Jared mentioned in the report on the fundraising for the trail?
Yeah, well, can everyone hear me? Am I coming through?
Yep.
Okay. I'm not a techno expert with all these things, so I just click something and hope it all works right. But anyway, first of all, to you, Mr. Mayor and City Manager and all the department heads and of course, members of the council, I, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and give you a quick update on our effort so far. As Jared alluded, we started this way back in September, October and, and did a little kickoff meeting out at Stolly Park. We're concentrating on Stolly Park Trail. That is the oldest portion of the trail in the city. It was built in 1990, the first trail. And it is in need of some repair. Some rather serious deterioration, others not so much. But a good portion of it could use repair or replacement. So we started this effort to assist the city in raising funds for repair of that particular trail as a start. And we kicked it off back in early fall and we've just been very, very gratified by the response so far. If you would allow me, I would like to read a list of the contributors. It's somewhat lengthy, but not, not so that long. Mike and I were the first contributors. We felt that if we're going to do something, we should be willing to give to the project and we have. Mike has purchased all of the challenge coins that are awarded to those contributors making a 500 or more contribution. He has paid for this from his own funds and he believes in it. It's, it's something from his military background. Military uses challenge coins for a purpose such as this, rewarding people and encouraging others to become involved. Let me run down the list quickly. Farmers and Northwest Bank both are in the University of Okoboji Marathon Committee. Was one of the first ones to step up as well. Reading on down the list, Northwest Iowa Realty, Arnold Motors and the Merrill Company each. Audio Visual, that's Randy Swanson, Christian Sheet Metal, Christopherson Construction and Roofing, Chuck Smith, Chris and Jane Goody. They are bikers and they really appreciate the trails and they're willing to step up. H and N Hanson Plumbing, Bill and Charmaine McAlpine, Midstates Builders, Dick and Mary Jean Montgomery, Bob Sagerman, Thrive Inn Insurance, Paul and Deona Vanderburg, Alex and Gene Pruitt, Steve Baumgarts. Those are the ones, as Jared said, there's about 12,600 that is paid already from those people. We have commitments from others that will be paying this year or into next year. The Bike Shop, Bikes Boards, et cetera, General Smith, Birchwood Estates, George Moriarty, Modern Woodman, Spencer Rotary. And then also those people who want to do it in next year's business. Modern Woodman is again with us for next year. Spencer Ready Mix has agreed to supply numerous amount of concrete for various repairs. Community State Bank, Gary and Ann Hoek, they want to do a minimum distribution of an IRA directly into the project. And those of us who have reached that magic age where we have to start taking some of our IRA money out, you can do it directly to a charity and eliminate the going on to your tax. Be sure to check with your tax provider, your, your attorney or check with City Hall. They have the information about that. We've also had a couple of people that would like to do a memorial. They would like to do a panel. And by a panel, the trail is 10 feet wide and it's sectioned off in seven to eight foot lengths. And we've had a couple of people step up and say, I would like to repair a particular panel in memory of a family member. And we're trying to figure out some way we might recognize that and, and have that memorial go on longer than just now. And we want to, we'll, we'll, we'll think of something. So putting it all together, we have either cash on hand or at City Hall and our total is about 21 and a half thousand. So we're very, very pleased with the effort so far. We know this is going to be a continuing effort. There won't be anything done this fall because we're pretty much out of the construction season now. And so it's not going to happen until next spring. So thank you to all who have contributed and we're having a lot of fun with it. And it seems like once or twice a week, we get a call from somebody who would like to make a contribution. And we just appreciate the interest and the concern that people have and the willingness to step up and take part in. So with that, I will stop my rambling and if you have any questions, I will attempt to answer. And again, thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Bob, for all that you and Mike Harlemann are doing to keep the trail safe out there and raise the money and make the project happen. Are there any questions for Jared?
I'll just do a comment to Bob. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Thank you, everyone. Item G, 7G Golf Course, Brian?
Good evening, everyone. With the nice weather, we've opened and closed the golf course, I think, three times now this fall. So that's got to be some sort of a record. We'll be open again tomorrow and Wednesday, folks come out and play golf. We will be following our original COVID provisions, so folks can come in the clubhouse, pay, and then exit the building to go play. There will be no seating or no congregating in the building. And once we close again towards the end of the week, then we'll be back following the regular city building policies and close to the public until further evaluation on the 31st. Nice weather's given us an opportunity to do a lot of outdoor work. We've got all of our trees cut down, pulled off the course. Tree turnings all finished. We were able to do a lot of irrigation work. Checked through a lot of valves and whatnot with the intake problems that we experienced in the month of October. So we're feeling pretty good about that stuff going into the winter right now. Had an opportunity to do a lot of online education, which is kind of nice to not have to drive anywhere to do it. And we've started doing some sharp, some shop work with equipment maintenance and sharpening reels. At this time, there's no more part-time employees left at the golf course, so it will be just myself moving forward. I think that's it, unless there's any questions from anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Item H, City Attorney, Don?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. November was a busier than average month for the legal department. Between Carrie and I, we, we spent 48 hours on city matters. Among them, some of the things that I noted took some time were the chief had some more abandoned vehicles that he's collected that we need to dispose of, so we were helping him with that process. We worked on some COVID-19 issues with the mayor and Amanda, considering what the county was processing. We had some economic development activity. Did spend some time on the challenge that Amanda mentioned to the Isonova building permit for their equalization tank. Working to get that resolved. If it, if we don't get it resolved sooner, as was noted, we'll have a hearing on January 25th. And there were a number of zoning board of adjustment issues that were addressed in November. The mayor asked me as part of my report this evening to summarize an opinion that I provided to the mayor and the city manager concerning the topic of political or opinion signs in residential areas. If you've been paying attention at all, you realize that the bitterness from the election has not fully subsided. Some of the residents in the community had, had placed signs and flags and pennants and they're still there. And the mayor and Amanda have received some expressions of concern and complaints. Some of them are offensive, at least to, to some people. So the question was, what, what if anything can the city do about that? In years past, there was a time limit, both at the state level and I believe here in the city, as the wind, political signs should be removed following election. Courts have frowned on those, on First Amendment, constitutional First Amendment grounds, saying, you know, you, you don't prevent other signs from, or limit them to a certain time. So those have kind of gone by the wayside and there aren't currently time limits. Somebody can support a candidate year round if they wish. The, the question I'm sure that, that some people are asking is, how, how come my neighbor can put up signs or flags that have curses or words on them and I think are objectionable? And the answer again is, is the First Amendment. Cities are not to regulate the content of signs. We, we have a provision that says that signs that can state, contain statements, words or pictures of an obscene, indecent or immoral, immoral character, which will offend community standards are prohibited. But the state has, and we've addressed this issue a few years ago, the state has decided what's obscene and they've set that out in a statute. So basically, the courts have said that curse words aren't obscene. They're just, I guess, strong opinion. So the bottom line is, the city doesn't have the authority to ban these flags and signs. The First Amendment does give you the right to express opinions to which your neighbors and even majority of the community might object. So that's where we are. I'll be glad to discuss questions you might have about that. Hopefully, the, the novelty will wear off as the snow begins to fly. Any questions?
Thank you, Don. Any questions for Don? All right. Item eight, Engineers Report. I believe I see Ross on the call.
Yeah, good evening. I don't have any construction to report on. I would say we did have a productive meeting with Public Works last week. Talked about future projects and things that are coming down the pipeline. So we are getting ramped up for some design work and here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Ross?
Hey Ross, just going into the spring, what do you see for work out there? I mean, as far as contractors being so pretty, pretty crazy busy?
Um, I would say I haven't talked to a lot of contractors just recently. I know about a month ago, I talked to several guys that were looking for work. You know, I think with the, with the conditions that we've had this fall, guys are getting a lot of work done. They got a lot of work done over the summer, so you're not going to see much carryover work like we have over the last couple of years. So hopefully the bid, the, you know, bidding environment will be favorable for the city with projects that we have coming up, so.
Thank you, Ross.
Yep, thanks, Ross.
Item nine, City Managers Report, Amanda?
Thanks, Mayor. As Don noted, we continue to work on economic development opportunities. The Spencer Economic Development Corporation will be meeting on Wednesday to move forward on the infill property project that we discussed with all of you a few weeks ago. Some opportunities have become available that we'll be discussing if that's the right path forward. Brian Weave and I have met with all of the department heads and reviewed the CIP information that's been submitted. We'll have the CIP presentation and meeting next Monday, December 14th, for you all to participate in. And lastly, we continue to move forward with our employee development process the week before Thanksgiving. We all met with Jenna Bidwell, with Carlson Detman and worked through some, some guidelines and thoughts about things that we, as an organization, desire to measure in our employees beyond specific job duties. You know, teamwork, that, that type of stuff. And so in correspondence with her today, she's drafting a, a, an employee development tool for us to review and implement. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions for Amanda? All right. Item 10, Mayor's Report. Few items. I would like to begin my comments by extending our condolences to the family of previous Spencer Mayor Cleaver Meyer and his wife Marla. Cleaver served the community from 1994 to 2003. I know I moved here in 1998 and I used to see Cleaver and his wife almost daily at the Main Street Cafe. Just a, a couple of comments I would like to extend to the family. We appreciate Cleaver's leadership in his tenure to the city of Spencer. A couple notable projects that occurred during his time as mayor. The implementation of the Deerfield Edition in town, which obviously has made a significant impact in the housing in our community as well as the putting in of the Spencer and the rehabilitation of the Spencer Family Aquatic Center. Was another significant project that happened during Cleaver's time and tenure. Cleaver was 91 years old and is survived by his widow, Marla. And so we would like to extend our gratitude and appreciation for the impact that Cleaver and his family had in Spencer and our condolences go out to his family. I'd like to touch a little bit on the land purchase that was on the agenda tonight. I've had some questions about the reason why the city would have purchased that. And what I would like to say is that we've made the commitment as your elected leaders to continually look towards the future of town and possible areas that we can develop, how we grow the community. And we felt as a council that this was an opportunity that doesn't come along very often, that we don't have a specific project or a specific use at this time. There's a lot of potential and a lot of different options that could be executed with that area. And so the main point I just want the citizens to understand is we continue to have future discussions about how we grow the community and that's why we made that purchase. The holidays are a time of extreme stress for some people and great joy for others. And so I would just like to encourage all the citizens out there during this month to take time and focus on your mental health, take time and focus on those around you, especially with the COVID-19 pandemic and some of the isolationism that's happening right now. And of course, our social behaviors have changed. And of course, our social behaviors have changed. I know I certainly feel it when I'm in public. Maybe people just don't want to be around me, but, you know, it's important to stay balanced, stay healthy, and continually, you know, keep those around you, in your thoughts as well as your contacts. And so I would like to remind the community of that. The last thing I would like to wrap up with, I've had a lot of questions about the mask mandate that was passed by the County Board of Health, and the comment that I would like you to know and understand is, based on the code of Iowa, the public health, the boards of health, in our area, it's a county board of health, they're charged by the state to oversee the public health of their jurisdiction. So again, in this area, it's the county. When we say the county, I don't want people to get confused about different governmental entities. The county's literally the county. We live in Clay County. Therefore, the public board of health, most of the time invisible to us, is constantly talking about what's good for our public health and different things that they can execute. And so at this time during this pandemic, they felt that it had reached the point to really pursue the, not only the campaign for masking, which we've been doing, I think, in the state of Iowa, you know, we were one of the early communities to try to promote that as one of the tools, along with social distancing and hand sanitization and just good practice on COVID. But the board of health came together and made a resolution that they felt was the necessary step to take at the time. And so, it went to the county supervisors, because that's the elected body that mirrors the county level that the board of health oversees. And so, that is what happened, that's what occurred, that's what passed. And so, I've had questions about if the city would pass a mask mandate, or are we going to pass a resolution in support of that? And the answer is, we don't need to. The board of health governs the overall safety of all the citizens of Clay County, and they are the health experts. You know, I want people to understand that that's not a board of politicians, it's not a board of elected people. Well, there's a county supervisor that sits on there, but other than that, they're all healthcare professionals. And so that board made the recommendation. And so, we have, I believe collectively as a body, since this thing started last March, we've taken the proactive steps when needed. You know, we took facility measures early and then relaxed them, and we put them back in place. And again, our commitment is to keep, number one, our staff healthy, so that the citizens can continue to receive the services that they need from their city government, and then continue to promote the message of positive public health. And so that's what we're going to continue to do. We do still meet daily with our COVID task force. The main concerns right now locally, the biggest variable that could impact you is the hospital capacity, both overall capacity as well as COVID capacity. There's a certain amount of beds related to COVID, and some of those are starting to free up a little bit, but the capacity we hear on our daily call is really strained and stressed right now, as well as the staffing of the services that the hospital executes, you know, elective surgeries, general care, those kinds of things. And so, we really appreciate all the people that are, you know, going through this pandemic and changing their work lifestyle, and healthcare is certainly at the front and center of that. And so those are my comments related to the County Board of Health resolution on the mask mandate. With that, I would entertain any questions anyone would have. All right. Hearing none. We'll move on to item 11, is the council and committee reports.
Mayor, we have a committee of the whole meeting next Monday, December 14th, at 5:30 PM for the capital improvement presentation. This year, it will look a little different than it has in past years. Brian Weave, because there's multiple Bryans on this call, will give an overview of the current fiscal year and current projects, and then we'll provide an overview of the capital improvement plan, highlighting new or innovative or sort of unusual things in the capital improvement plan for each department. And then department heads will be available to answer any questions you might have, and then we'll have a discussion after the presentation. And then we have our regular city council meeting, the last one of the calendar year on December 21st at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Amanda. Item 12, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any questions or discussion? Brian said he did send some additional claims out and wants to make sure everyone received those. Okay. We will call the vote.
Nelson?
Aye.
Morrison?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Onechel?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Moriarty?
All right, thank you. Item 13, other business opportunity to address the council. Would anyone like the floor? Looks like Brian would. So what we'd like, what we typically do is state your name and address, and then two to three minutes or so.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Excellent. Brian Balk, 1124 St. Luke Drive. Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak briefly tonight. I did want to touch on the land purchase that was approved tonight, and, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for your comments and some clarification. I would offer respectfully some slight pushback on the city moving forward with these type of purchases. Mr. Mayor, you were recently quoted something, I'll paraphrase, something along the lines of "cities don't build towns, developers do." And I thought that statement back in August, speaking about the IGL project, was spot-on. I agree that opportunities like that don't come often, and I think that that piece of land could offer a great opportunity for our community. However, I will remind everyone here tonight about the Green Zone and the spec building that we built a number of years ago. That project, although thankfully, finally sold, took a long time and a lot of resource and a lot of effort, and to say that it was a great success probably is not accurate. I don't speak for former Councilman Baumgars, but I do know that in previous conversations, he says that that's one of the worst decisions that he recalls making during his time on the council. Moving forward, I don't know exactly what the plans are, it doesn't seem as though possibly the city does either at this point in time, but I would caution us, as a city, as a government, about buying land, about looking to take over potential residential properties within our community that are subpar. I think we open the door for a lot of headache that the city frankly doesn't need. And I do go back to that statement or that comment that you made, Mr. Mayor, because at the time, I couldn't agree with it more. I believe that the growth of this community should be on the backs of investors, developers, business owners, entrepreneurs, and not that of the city. I would also say, and I was not there at the time of the bid, but if there were any private individuals bidding on this property and the city outbid them, I think at best that is completely unacceptable. I hope that was not the case, but if it was, it's unfortunate. So, I hope and I assume, because I, to this board's credit, I have been extremely impressed over the last couple of years with this council, with our mayor, with our in-city employees. I think, as a whole, this community has seen so much growth, so much potential, so much build over the last few years, and I want to see that continue. But I caution this board that that possibly should not be done by the board, rather, as our mayor so put it, by individuals, developers, and investors who are willing to take that risk, and the city then can either support and assist them with that growth. So, I hesitated making these comments tonight, but I do think, moving forward, I would ask that my council and this board and my mayor use caution moving forward with thoughts or ideas of acquiring additional land or additional property, and rather look for ways to support the developers and support the investors in their endeavors to hopefully better our community as a whole. And with that, I thank you for your time and your attentiveness.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate your comments. I can answer a few of them in a little further detail. And thank you for following close as a citizen, by the way, to what we say and holding us accountable. I believe that the discussion that we had related to this property reflects your concerns and your outlook. So, cities are built and will continue to be built on the backs of developers, not the city, but the city always plays a role. So what we are seeing in our community over the last 15 or 20 years is we run into some infrastructure challenges, especially sewer build-outs, sanitary as well as public sewer, as well as electrical service, streets, things of that nature. When things are not done in a strategically planned-out fashion, especially in a large chunk of area, and the city always plays a role, it's not necessarily prevalent to the citizens. So you might have a city that is heavily invested in TIF, so they're going to defer tax income for a developer, or they're going to put streets in, or they're going to do the sewer, or the developer's going to do the streets and the sewer. There's always a role. And we felt, and I don't want to speak for the other council members, they can speak for themselves, but when we had our collective discussion, we thought as it relates to enabling developers to strategically make money and develop the town, these 100 acres could serve in a great catalyst for that. I spoke to a developer today, and they had similar concerns that you had. One of the challenges that any developer has, and of course, there's different layers to developments, but the biggest challenge that they typically have is the upfront capital to weather the storm, to get to the back end of the project in order to make their money. That, right out of the gate, is a limiting factor for a lot of people to take on projects and can constrict growth in communities. And so what we've seen across the state, especially in the Sioux County area, they've done a lot of projects like this, where the city can come in and be a catalyst for those developers and help them in the project layout. So rather than having to swallow a bunch of upfront costs, weather the storm, try to get to the end of the project, we can work in a symbiotic relationship in a planned-out fashion and develop the town. And so, as it relates to this specific purchase, I believe those were key variables as to why we made the purchase. But we have no intention, you know, to be the developer. We talked a lot about that in closed session. We just want to be a catalyst to have strategic development as it relates to the acres. So that was our stance. That's, we're very conscious of the role of government and the role of the private sector, and we work together, I think, in great fashion. The other challenge you run into, if somebody would have bought those and divided those up, and we see this in other places in our community, where, in fact, the same developer I was talking to today, they own some property that could be developed, but they're landlocked, and there's other open ground beside them, but that landowner has no interest in developing. And so when it comes to laying out streets, if you were to just look at an aerial map, we could have probably three to four neighborhoods, and I would say that's, I would guess, probably a 25-block area, but the development would be squeezed down to about a 12-block area right now, and the streets can't really be laid out, especially from a safety perspective, in a way to get fire trucks in and out, a way to have a planned neighborhood. So, as it relates to developing, we feel that there's explosive growth that can happen. The commuter study that was just done, sorry, it's a long answer to your question. The commuter study that just came back in the spring, about 45% of our workforce commutes in daily, so we're talking probably 4,000 to 5,500 people. And of those polled in those commuter traffic studies, a lot of them would like to live here. The problem is, we don't have a lot of housing, and when we see housing go up, we see it filled fairly quickly. And so again, that also led to the discussion of if we can acquire this, and we set a ceiling, it wasn't, it was not, so the public understands, it wasn't just drunken sailors, you know, spending tax money. There was a plan, there was a limit, there was a valuation that was put on it internally, and so it met all those standards. And to answer your question about private bidders, yes, there were private bidders also bidding. So, what's important to understand is, there will be private, I believe, when those acres get developed, the money will be made primarily by the private industry. They're going to come in and do the work. In essence, what we've done is secure the ability for the potential of the town to grow in those 100 acres. So that was the reason for the purchase. Land around here, especially inside the city limits, does not come up very often, and when it does, we felt as an elected body that we needed to take a strong discussion about what our role, if we had a role in the development of those acres would be. And so that's how, that's how we led to the item tonight. So if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out to any of us, obviously me, you know, or anybody else will take the time to work through anything else that you have. So I appreciate you being here tonight. Anybody else? Brian's a hard act to follow up. Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
First by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Looks like, following the meeting, we will hold a collective bargaining strategy session, just as a reminder. So first, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Do we stay on this link?